Alright. Uh, let's bring that music down. Okay. Bonjour tout le monde, je m'appelle Skylar et bienvenue. Mon programme, Skylar Learns French. It starts with me always adjusting my microphone cuz, you know, can't ever be really sa- huh, 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 everything's so last minute. Um, yeah. Um, so, uh, this is my show and, uh, this is where we learn some French. So I hope you can watch and join and participate in our live chat and show me some corrections or help, uh, help me understand some words or, um, you know, say that you're having trouble with things too. Uh, love to hear it, so drop, drop on in, um, and say hello. Um, today is day twenty-three of the thirty-day challenge. We are really rolling along here. It's, uh, just one, one more week and then we'll leave Sweet Crude's channel alone. Uh, and, uh, stop annoying you with these notifications that show up every single day. Um, I will not stop learning French though. Thirty days was a challenge to get into learning French, not to finish learning French. Uh, okay, so I start the show by saying bonjour, bienvenue, uh, eh, uh, mon nom est Skylar. I'm really practicing this. Uh, je m'appelle Skylar, uh, and, uh, yeah. Aujourd'hui, eh, aujourd'hui, is it eh? We talked about this yesterday. It's both, right? You can say c'est mardi, c'est mardi, vingti un juillet du milan. That is today and, uh, we're excited to be here. Okay, so today's first item is, uh, we're gonna do some, we're gonna do some flashcards today, uh, on my book, Three Hundred Moe's. Brrp, da-da-da, little kid's book. These are, um, three hundred, three hundred little kid words, if it'll focus. Oh yeah? Nope, not gonna focus, not gonna do it. Okay, that's cool, no big deal. Um, but they're like little, you can, you can see the pictures, obviously. This is a little kid's book. It's a coloring book. Um, but funny enough, I don't know any of these words, so gotta learn, gotta learn, you know, something, uh, sometime. Uh, so, I've been learning the flashcards. Let's get into that. Uh, this is hotkey two. Okay. Um, I've been learning these flashcards and Kelsey has let me know that I'm learning them the wrong way, or not learning them the wrong way, but like not doing the work fully, I think is the right way to say it. Um, so today, I'm gonna go through the first hundred of our three hundred words. Look at that, right there, three hundred Moe's. Uh, trois cents, right? Trois cent moe? And I'm gonna do it English to French. What's the plan? English to French rather than French to English. French to English apparently is the easy way out. Can't do that anymore. Um, okay, ow, I gotta get some water or something. Oh, I got a frog in my throat right when we start. Ugh, ugh, okay. Let's get into it. Put five minutes on the clock, please. Okay, ready to go. Um, une, okay, shoe. I think this is feminine. Une chaussette, no, chasseur. Is it, is it feminine? Une chasseur, une chasseur. Yay. Glasses, uh, glasses are plural. Des lunettes, des lunettes, great. Uh, une pomme. Alarm clock. This is the dream waker. Um, eh, une rêverie, un rêverie, un rêverie.
Un réveil.
Réveil, un réveil. It's masculine. Un rêverie. Not saying it right. Uh, un bonhomme, bonhomme de neige, a snowman. A handbag, un sacrement.
Handbag.
Une sacrement. Okay, a shark, shark, une shark. Uh, un raccin.
Shark.
Oops.
Un racin.
Raccin, racin, a shark, un racin. Towel, uh, une serviette, serviette.
Une serviette.
Serviette, une serviette. Okay, cool. Flippers, uh, this is plural and it is des palmes, like a palm tree. Des palmes, flippers. Banana, un banan. Oh, it's a, ah, une, une, une banane. Okay, do it pretty good. Uh, pants, trousers, um, oh, pantalons, uh, des pantalons. Ah, shoot, un pantalon. Okay, uh, mess that up. These are plural. Des sandals are, uh, obviously sandals. Rabbit, un lapin.
Rabbit.
Un lapin. Shampoo, um, un chapeau. Is it une or eh? I think it's masculine. Eh, un chapeau, cool? Oh, oh no, dang it, I. Bathing suit is un maillot, un maillot de bain, is that how you say it?
Un maillot de bain.
Maillot de bain, un maillot de bain. I guess I'll start it. Kinda spoiled it there. Duck, un canal, un canal. Let's make sure, yep, okay. What is, we, we doing okay over here? We got people streaming, okay?
We, we doing okay over here?
Okay, oh gosh, got a little echo happening.
Okay.
Okay, oh gosh, this is the worst, okay. Um, un canal, un canal, un canal, un con, can, un can. Okay, doing it. Beach umbrella, uh, parasol, right? Eh, parasol, I didn't do the article, my bad. Eh, parasol. Eh, super héros, super héros, super héros, super héros, remember, super a-hole, super héros. Okay, uh, un girafe, it's, ah, mask, it's feminine. Une girafe, une girafe. Une fleur, it's a flower. Um, um, no, it's a feminine. Une muette.
Une muette.
Seagull, une muette, une chêle. It's a ladder. Une beignet, eh, beignet, I think it's un beignet, un beignet. Okay, cool, doughnut. Uh, eh, un papillon, un papillon. Parachute is un parachute.
Un parachute.
Great. Leaf is une feuille.
Une feuille.
Une feuille. Hippopotamus is un hippopotame.
Un hippopotame.
Bone is un os.
Bone.
Un os. Rocket ship, fusée, une fusée, un fusée.
Rocket ship.
Gosh, damn, it is, it's feminine, that's so strange to me. Fusée.
Rocket ship.
Sometimes these things don't follow what you think they would be. Une fusée, une fusée. Okay, I'll mark it. Ballon, une ballon.
Balloon.
Nope, dang it, these articles are killing me. Un ballon. Un panda, okay? Uh, plural, des, des souris, souris, des souris.
Des sourises.
Des sourises, cherries. Une fourchette, arfuerque. Scooter is a, une trottolet.
Scooter.
Trottolet, une trottolet. A snail is un escargot.
A snail. Un escargot.
Trash can, une poubelle.
Trash can.
Great. French fries, des fruits, great. Worm, une, un verre.
Worm.
Un verre. Une glace, killing it. Pan, uh, un casserole, casseroles, casseroles. Une, ah, dang it.
Une casserole.
Une casserole. Lunchbox, un boîte repas.
Lunchbox.
Un boîte.
Une boîte repas.
Repas. Un dis.
Dice.
Damn, I'm doing the wrong thing. Un dis.
Un dé.
Great. Un hélicoptère.
Un hélicoptère.
Un, un tigre, une tigresse.
Un tigre, une tigresse.
Ah, tigre.
Un tigre, une tigresse.
We'll move on. Uh, uh, une plante, une plante.
Plante.
Une plante.
Une plante.
Okay. Football, un ballon de football.
Football. Un ballon de football.
Great. T-shirt is un t-shirt, great. Candy, un bonbon, un bonbon. Baseball cap, un casquette, une casquette.
Ooh, ooh. Une casquette.
Okay. Popcorn, du popcorn.
Popcorn.
Du popcorn.
Du popcorn.
Painting, une peintre.
Une teinture.
Uh, peinture, peintre, I was thinking of painter. Une peinture, I'll mark it, it's okay. Des briques, there goes. Watch is a, une montre, great. Uh, un lion.
Lion.
Un lion.
Un lion.
Un lion. Une télécommande. Une télévision. Uh, une voiture de police.
Une voiture de police.
Okay. Euh, arc en ciel.
Rainbow.
No. Euh, arc.
Un arc en ciel.
Great. Um, we're at our time. Euh, des raisons, des raisons. Uh, blimp is a flying didgeridoo. Is a indirigeable, indirigeable.
Blimp, indirigeable.
Indirigeable, dang it, indirigeable.
Indirigeable.
Okay, indirigeable. Un boss. Euh, lama.
Un lama.
Un lama. It's not llama, it's lama. Uh, umbrella is a, not a parasol, uh, papouli, papouli, un, un, un papouli.
Umbrella.
Think it's, uh, yeah, it's masculine, dang. Un papouli.
Un parapluie.
Papouli, papouli, suck. Uh, une chaussette.
Suck. Une chaussette.
Ah, chaussette, chaussette, une chaussette. Okay, we're pretty close. Briefcase, uh, missed this one last time. Um, hmm. Une, um, come on dude, you got it, it's like on the tip of your, ugh. Uh, it's like met, une met, met something, met, met, melette, ah, melette. Dang it, man, dang, 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 une melette. Um, camera. Un appareil photo, un appareil photo. Strawberry, du, hey Kelsey, yay. Are you excited? I'm doing the thing you want me to do, I'm so excited, yay. Thanks for dropping by. Strawberry, des fruits, des, no, des phrases, des phrases. Let's see, oh shoot, not plural, you can have a single strawberry, what are you doing? Une phrase.
Une fraise.
Une fraise, and I'm saying it wrong. Thought I knew that one. Une fraise. Une carte, uh, une bicyclette, okay? Une chèvre, un chèvre, chèvre.
Une chèvre.
Oh, I had it right, it's feminine. Une chèvre, une chèvre. Uh, un chapeau, un chapeau. I'm almost to a hundred, right? Compass, um, t-t-t-t, compass. Um, this is, don't be un beau-sol, an imbécile, un bois-sol. Don't be un bois-sol and go camping without a compass. So, un bois-sol.
Une boussole.
Une boussole, oh, it's une boussole.
Une boussole.
That's why that device wasn't working. Une boussole. Uh, okay. Beehive, this is a, uh, une ruche, une ruche de baie. Une ruche de baie.
Une ruche de baie.
Great. Boot is a boat, bot, boi, 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 boi. Uh, un boit.
Boot.
Un boit.
Une bot.
Un bot, bot, not bois, but it's boat, un boat, okay? Could picture the word in my head, but I still said it wrong, so I'll mark it. Grasshopper, um.
Grasshopper.
Um, this is, uh, one time I got lost while I was camping cuz I was an imbécile and I didn't bring my imboussole, my boussole. Uh, and I had to sauté, uh, real grasshoppers. So it's a, saut, sauteril, sauteril, sauteril.
Une sautrel.
Une sautrel. That was a long way around and still didn't get it. Well, it's, it's close, it's closer. Ladybug, cocoril, coco, coco, cocoril. Ah. Une coc, innel, coc, cocinelle.
Une cocinelle.
Une cocinelle, I had a thing for this yesterday, une cocinelle. Okay, ladybug, we're just not doing very well together. Um, did you see that, did you see that road sign? Better put on our signal, head over to Panera Bread. So this is a, une panneau de signalisation. Une panneau de signalisation.
Un panneau de signalisation.
Un panneau de signalisation. Fish, un poisson. Mushroom. Une champignon, champignon, une champignon.
Mushroom. Un champignon.
Dang it. Un champignon, un champignon, champignon. Uh, bi, de baie. Une, une baie. Checking out here. Pot, une pot. Picnic basket. Uh, un péné de picnic. Un péné de picnic.
Un panier de picnic.
It's pretty close. Reina saure, une reina saure. Uh, okay. Top. That guy's so bald, you can take his toupee off and spin a top on it. Is that toupee? Une toupee.
Top.
Une.
Une toupie.
Toupie, une toupie. Un trompet.
Trompet, un trompet.
Euh, un jeu de société, société.
Board game. Un jeu de société.
Société, un jeu de société, un jeu de société. Airplane, un avion, un avion.
Airplane.
Okay. Skateboard, une planche, une planche de roulette, de roulette. Une planche à.
Une planche à roulette.
À roulette, une planche à roulette, skateboard. La maison, à une maison, I knew that one. Uh, un robot. Euh, une planète.
Une planète.
Mother Earth, une planète. Un crocodile. Uh, astronaut, un astronome, non, astronome, une astronome. Un astronome, une astronome. Hula hoop, this is a cerceau. Une cerceau.
Un cerceau.
No, un cerceau.
Un cerceau.
It is masculine, un cerceau. Spaceship is une astronome. I think it's, eh, une astronome, eh, let's see, an astronome, damn, damn, ta-ta-ta-ta. Okay, it's marked. Euh, pyjama.
Un pyjama.
And, uh, débile.
Marbles. Débile.
Débile, 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 okay? Uh, un pistolet, un pistolet, is that right? Yeah, une pistolet.
Une piste de course.
Une pistolet, une pistolet, okay? Um, underwear, and this is from, uh, this is, uh, un sous-vêtement, un sous-vêtement. Vêtement, un sous-vêtement.
Un sous-vêtement.
Un sous-vêtement, thanks Kelsey for the tips on that one, it's your under vest. And sous-vêtement. All right, and I'm one hundred, what is the word for today? Hockey stick, oh, my favorite. This is H-E-double-batton. H-E-double-des-battons-de-du-hockey, des-hockey, let's see, is it de or du? De. Uh, let's see, de, yeah, un batton de hockey. Uh, cool, des-battons-de-hockey, okay? Obviously masculine cuz hockey, bro. Okay, that was long and annoying and I hated it. Um, not gonna do Babbel today because that's also long and annoying and I hate it. Um, and I've already taken up all my time. I did wanna say that what I've worked on today is, I've read through this, I've, I've signed up for this little site here, um, based on some advice from some people, that it's newsinfrench.org and they send you a little article every day with the news and a song, le chanson de jour, and, um, a bunch of, uh, things. So, all right, I started the day by reading this, little, this had a little thing on Netflix, which is great, um, and then I listened to an hour of this playlist that I suggest that you listen to, and I think, these are two minutes long, so let's just listen to this, but this is, it obviously starts very basic, um, but then it advances and this is great. So this is Learning French in a Natural Way. Um, this was also suggested by French teach, a French teacher to me, um, and I've been, uh, kinda diving down this rabbit hole. So before I get into, uh, oiseau et la baleine, the story of the bird and the whale, which we'll end on today, I just wanted to share this, um, I listened to about an hour of this, this morning.
Pour t'aider à acquérir le français naturellement. Et je vais te raconter une histoire, une histoire de Marie, l'artiste. Il y a une femme.
Il y a une femme.
Une femme.
Une femme.
Il y a une femme.
There is.
Elle s'appelle Marie.
Elle s'appelle Marie.
Marie est une femme.
Est une femme.
Et c'est une artiste.
Et c'est une artiste.
Marie est une artiste, c'est une femme. Et Marie a un animal, elle a un chien.
Elle a un chien. She has a dog.
Elle a un chien. Il s'appelle Medor.
Il s'appelle Medor.
Marie a un chien qui s'appelle Medor. Mais Marie a un problème.
She has a problem.
Elle veut un animal spécial. Elle veut une girafe.
Elle veut un girafe.
Alors, Marie a une idée.
A une idée.
C'est une artiste. Elle peint son chien Medor en girafe. Elle le peint en girafe. Maintenant, Marie est contente, elle a une girafe. Et voilà, c'est la.
Okay, um, so that's really, really cool, right? Um, I, I love it. And the stories are really easily digestible, obviously going really slow, um, she's drawing in the middle, super low production, uh, but it's, it's true, it's like this is how you learn, this is how you learn naturally, you just hear these things happening. Um, so I suggest jumping on this, French the Natural Way, the per, the channel over on YouTube is Alice, I don't know, Ayele, Ayele, is that how you say this? Anyway, check out, look at this, this, they're, um, these playlists. Get out here, go away. Look at this, culture, chanson française, movie talk, films de wa, and with like six, uh, like stories, culture, she had one on dance, yeah, look at the bouge, moving, dance moves, all kinds of stuff. So this is a great resource, I think, just check that out. Okay, I'm gonna jump back into l'oiseau et la baleine, baleine, baleine? We gotta nail that down. The Bird and the Whale, last time, I should probably, uh, give a sen- The bird and the whale, last time, I should probably, uh, give a synopsis of this in French one day. But I can't, just yet. Um, so last time we learned that there is a bird and a whale and they're very much in love. And, um, and basically, they just love talking to each other and being around each other and they admire each other's company and think the world of each other. Um, and we just found out that, the world does not wait for these two though, because, uh, the cold is coming, winter is coming. And all the other whales have left the ocean for warmer water. Uh, so that's kinda where we left off, right? Uh, here's, here's where we left off. Le, mais le monde ne s'arrête pas de tourner simplement parce que, parce qu'un, parce qu'un oiseau et une baleine tombent, tom- tombent à mort. Tombent, tombé, I think it's tombé, tombé à mort, they've, because they fell in love. Était fait place à l'automne et l'automne fait place à l'hiver. So it becomes, uh, so autumn becomes. Uh, sorry, summer becomes autumn, autumn becomes, uh, winter. Uh, l'océan divan, devant, devant quoi, et tout, la baleine, parant, parti, partir vers des eaux plus chaudes. Okay, butchered that, of course, but that's fine. Um, so that's where we left off. I think, uh, I'm queued up, so let's listen to the next passage.
Viens avec moi vers des eaux plus chaudes, dit la baleine. C'est un endroit formidable, il y fait toujours chaud, et il y a tellement de poissons à manger.
Okay, so this is the whale talking. Viens avec moi vers des eaux plus chaudes. Okay, come with me. Uh, towards. Uh, des eaux, the waters that are, uh, warmer, towards the warmer water. Says the whale. C'est une, uh, c'est un endroit formidable. Uh, I don't know what endroit, entre is. Um, but he's saying, it is. A. Saying, it, it's a place, really ni, it's a place that's nice. It's my guess. Il y a fait toujours chaud. Uh, it is always warm. Et il y a tellement, tellement de poissons à manger. And, uh, there are so many, uh, fish to eat. Let's see, come with me to warmer waters, says the whale, it's a wonderful place. C'est une endroit formidable. It is always warm there, and there are so many fish, il y a tellement de poissons à manger, to eat. Okay, cool, let's listen to it one more time.
Viens avec moi vers des eaux plus chaudes, dit la baleine. C'est un endroit formidable.
Ah, c'est un, I said c'est une, that's dumb, c'est un, and then, let's hear this one more time.
Viens avec moi vers des eaux plus chaudes, dit la baleine. C'est un endroit formidable.
Endroit, endroit, what is endroit, can we look this up real fast? Endroit, Google, translate. Endroit, place. Oh, well, there you go, oui, endroit. Hmm, okay. Let's keep going, uh, it's a endroit formidable.
Dable, il y fait toujours chaud, et il y a tellement de poissons à manger. J'aime manger du poisson, dit l'oiseau, et je t'aime aussi, je te suivrai n'importe où, mais d'abord, apprends-moi à être une baleine.
Okay, j'aime, j'aime manger du poisson, I do love eating fish, says the bird. Et je t'aime aussi. Euh, and I love you as well. Uh, je te suivrai n'import- nim- non, important où. Uh. Okay, so he's saying, I, you follow, will follow, important where, not important where. It doesn't matter where we go. Or. Uh. Or I'll follow you wherever, something along those lines, mais d'abord, first, but first, apprendre-moi, teach me. À être une baleine, teach me how to be a, a whale, okay? I love to eat fish, says the bird, and I love you too. I will follow you anywhere, je te, je te suivrai n'importe où. Uh, but first, teach me to be whale. Mais d'abord, apprendre-moi à être une baleine, let's see how close I was on that.
J'aime manger du poisson, dit l'oiseau, et je t'aime aussi, je te suivrai n'importe où.
Je te suivrai n'importe où, n'importe où, n'ap- n'importe où.
Mais d'abord, apprends-moi à être une baleine.
Apprends-moi, uh, mais d'abord, apprends-moi à être, I, that, that happens so fast.
Et je t'aime aussi, je te suivrai n'importe où, mais d'abord, apprends-moi à être une baleine.
Apprends-moi à être, à être, un baleine, that's what it sounds like to me, apprends-moi à être une baleine. Let's see if we got.
Et je t'aime aussi, je te suivrai n'importe où, mais d'abord, apprends-moi à être une baleine.
Apprends-moi à, à être une baleine, man, I can't catch it, it's so fast.
Du poisson, dit l'oiseau, et je t'aime aussi, je te suivrai n'importe où, mais d'abord, apprends-moi à être une baleine.
Apprends-moi à être une baleine, that's tough, okay, let's keep going. Um, quelqu'un, une hache de, ordonnant ici dans. Um, Sam, I don't know what any of those words mean, when you put them in the comments, when they're all in French, I don't know what you're saying. Uh. Uh, quelqu'un, now I'm translating, trying to translate you too, I obviously don't know what I'm doing, jeez, man. Um, I think you're saying, is there anybody, uh, in here, ici dans, is that means like, someone, quelqu'un? Someone, blah, 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 with, oh, uh, I see. Is, are you saying, are you saying, is somebody cutting onions in here? I don't know what you're saying, Sam, your brain's weird. Okay. Comme ça. Um. Comme ça, this looks like a fami, this is very common, right? Comme ça, like, like this, is that what he's saying, comme ça, like this? Dit la baleine, suis-moi. Um, suis-moi, um, wait, comme ça, I'm just probably like, like what? Dis-moi, suis-moi, be me, is that how you say that? Et elle prolonge, prof- uh, plonge, plonge, okay, uh, skip. Profondément, profondément, dans lui, profonde, et, the accent, accent. Profondément dans lui, l'eau, sorry, dans l'eau. And, so, something, something, like this. Uh, and suis-moi is be me, or something, and then, she plunges. Profoundly, I don't know, into the water. D'accord, dit l'oiseau, et il plongeait aussi dans l'eau. Okay, let's see what this means, like this, says the whale, follow me, okay, so this isn't be me, it's suivez-moi, or suis-moi. Uh, suivez, sorry, suivez-moi, is what we heard in the last story with the canal, oh, no, in the Rena, Rena said, suivez-moi. He was a evil villain. Maybe this is the for, the informal, like, two version of this, suis-moi. Uh, cause they're in love, that would make sense. Uh, okay, so then he says, follow me, and she dived deep into the water. Okay, d'accord, said the bird, and he also dived into the water, so plonge is that, so let's, um, is dived, let's hear it.
J'aime manger du poisson, dit l'oiseau, et je t'aime aussi, je te suivrai n'importe où, mais d'abord, apprends-moi à être une baleine.
Here it is.
Comme ça, dit la baleine, suis-moi, et elle plongeait profondément dans l'eau.
Profond, uh, plonge, profondément dans l'eau.
D'accord, dit l'oiseau, et il plongeait aussi dans l'eau.
L'i, l'i plonge aussi dans l'eau. Okay.
Il descendait de plus en plus profondément. J'ai un âge, rit-il, je suis une baleine.
Oh my god, is this bird about to drown? Oh my god, I can't handle these kid stories. Oh, this is gonna be terrible. Do y'all know this story? I've never heard this, maybe I skipped over, maybe I had a traumatic childhood and put all these terrible stories behind me. Okay. Il descendait de plus en plus profondément. De neige, rit-il. Uh. De neige, rit-il, je suis une baleine. Uh, baleine, um, okay, he went lower. Um. He went lower, uh, and deeper. De, je neige, I'm swimming. Rit-il, what is that, like, dit? Dit-il, that's weird, rit-il, he said. Uh, je suis une baleine, uh, he says, I'm a, I'm a whale. He went deeper and deeper. Il descendait, descendait de plus en plus profondément. Plus and plus profondément. I'm swimming, he left, I'm a whale, oh, laughed, gotcha, rit-il, left, okay, here, let's hear it.
Mais bientôt, il ne.
Oh, oh, skipped it, sorry.
Plus en plus profondément en l'eau. D'accord, dit l'oiseau, et il plongeait aussi dans l'eau.
Okay, here it is.
Il descendait de plus en plus profondément.
Il descendait de plus en plus profondément.
Man. J'ai un âge, rit-il, je suis une baleine.
J'ai un âge, rit-il, je suis une baleine, okay? We're doing pretty good, I'm way over time, I'm just gonna keep going, I don't know how much lo, ah, don't look at the story, don't look ahead. Blinders, put your blinders on here, this is a good story. C'est une bonne histoire.
Mais bientôt, il ne peut plus respirer, il retournait à la surface à bout de souffle. Il essaya encore et encore de nager, mais il manquait de souffle à chaque fois.
Okay, he didn't drown, that's good. Uh, mais bientôt, uh, il ne peut plus respirer. Um, but, later, like, bientôt, like, see you later, right? But later, he, something, he had to breathe, respirer, I think is, resp, like, respa, what am I trying to say? Um, respiratory system. Uh, inspirer is, uh, in, out, that kinda thing, okay. Um. Il retournait, il retournera, retournait, la, à la surface, à la surfe- surface. À bout de souffle, ah, man, no, no idea here, what's happening. Uh, il essaya, il essaya, he tried again, encore et encore, de nager, to swim, mais, il manquait, manif- et de souffle à chaque fois. Um, but he, something, something, each time. Ugh, let's get a lifeline on this. Okay, mais, he could not breathe. Mais soon, okay, see you soon, is bientôt, come on dude, à bientôt, soon. Mais su, mais bientôt, il ne peut, he could not. Um. Plus respirer. He returned to the surface, gasping, at the surface, à bout de souffle. Okay. Uh, he tried to swim again and again, il essaya encore et encore de nager, mais, he ran out of breath every time. Il manquait, so that's ran, run out of, de souffle, of breath, à chaque fois. Okay, let's listen.
Rê, il retournait à la surface. Il descendait de plus en plus profondément. J'ai un âge, rit-il, je suis une baleine. Mais bientôt, il ne peut plus respirer, il retournait à la surface à bout de souffle. Il essaya encore et encore de nager, mais il manquait de souffle à chaque fois.
Whew, okay, that's pretty tough. Man, I really wanna know how much lo, okay, so we got, we're about halfway through the story, according to this, I don't wanna scroll down and see any more pictures. I'm trying to learn, but I don't wanna get all the context clues, so I'm like, I, I wanna know, anyway, whatever, I don't wanna ruin the surprise. This is really what it is, my heart can't take it. Okay, I think we've done pretty good for the day. Uh, my plan is to, I'm gonna do some Babbel by myself, and I'm gonna see how I do. Uh, I'm gonna go through the starred words that I messed up on our, um, in our vocabulary. Hopefully tomorrow, ugh, I can do, uh, number two hundred to three hundred, if I can do three hundred words, two hundred, three hundred. Uh, tomorrow, yeah, of our three hundred words, that's what I meant to say. And, then I'm gonna probably try to listen to a little bit more of the, um, natural monte, uh, learn French natural monte façon. The natural monte façon. Um. Hope this was enjoyable and useful, and if not, I don't know, I don't know what I'm doing. We're trying over here, jeez. Okay, I'm gonna come up with a sign-off eventually, but for now, I'm just gonna say, bye.